All right, this page is now called. Uh, James, would you like to lay some prayers in?
Goodness, Father. Our heavenly Father, we give you honor and praise, Lord, for your Son, Jesus Christ. We're thankful for our health and our country, for our county, that the Lord did to deal wisely with issues that come forth, please send them home, pray. Amen. Amen.
Jeremy?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Craig Brooks.
Here.
Debbie Davis.
Here.
David Siegel. D.B. Eskenau.
Here.
Mark Evans.
Here.
Jeremy Kinsey.
Here.
John Pipinger.
Here.
Samantha Trancom.
Yes.
James Switty.
Approval of minutes of prayer is made.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Craig Brooks.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
D.B. Eskenau.
No.
Mark Evans.
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey.
Yes.
John Pipinger.
Yes.
Samantha Trancom.
Yes.
James Switty.
No. I airplane was fast, I believe it was a wrong entry on that.
What was the entry?
There's one that's broken down, they have to. One pass and one no.
Come down there.
He showed everybody, said yes.
I might know that, I wasn't at the last meeting.
Two, three. Pass, now it's a no. Two, eight, I didn't see it, one. That's how you vote, thank you.
The duty of the pass?
Yes.
The time was an hour. Okay.
Approval of reports of offices.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Craig Brooks.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
D.B. Eskenau.
Yes.
Mark Evans.
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey.
Yes.
John Pipinger.
Yes.
Samantha Trancom.
Yes.
James Switty.
Yes.
Approval of notes. Now. Amber Clements. Jeremy Brown. Hanny Emerson. Jennifer Kennedy. Paula Burris.
Motion to approve.
Second motion.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Craig Brooks.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
D.B. Eskenau.
Yes.
Mark Evans. Jeremy Kinsey.
Yes.
Samantha Trancom.
Yes.
James Switty.
Yes.
Okay, budget amendments. Are we going to do these individually, together?
All the 101s can be done together.
Okay. 101, do I need to read them?
Yeah, just the names. It's been sourced and spent a certain amount. Received.
Okay, the first one, amendment number 13, civil defense, $6,000. Budget number, amendment number 14. Probation fees, $75. Amendment number 15. Undesignated, this is from the...
It's for the convenience center salaries.
Okay, what we discussed and okay. This would be the convenience centers' salaries, $56,388. Government grants, $10,649. Number 16. Number 17, it's undesignated. $13,000, this is for general administration, maintenance and repair, $13,256.
That was for the Gracie Creek site work.
Okay. Gracie Creek site work.
It is being completed.
Okay, that's... This board of education is something different.
Yeah, that'd be 31.
Okay. All right, these are all of the budget amendments.
Motion to approve the budget amendment, what was the start number?
Uh, 13 through 17, right?
13 through 17.
Yeah, 17.
13 through 17.
Say. Any discussion?
Only, of course, you said the Gracie Creek site was completed?
Yeah.
Yes.
And this includes that underground that we didn't have on the original.
The indoor was still attached, the one they did.
Yeah, this is...
It was like $10,000 and they had that underground.
The underground was...
139 foot.
139 foot.
Yeah. So that's a total build in for you.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's all a good...
14. I'm trying to say where you want to live.
On there before. And on the, uh, this, uh, number 16, that's just flow through.
That is the, yeah, we have a hospital closure grant that helps for the comprehensive medical center, so I just received that check back, I just need to put it back in the line.
And then, uh...
To keep paying for the medical records.
14 and 13 are just line out.
13 was an emergency, after the fire.
But it's still taken...
Yeah, it's if they're...
Yeah.
It's a lateral, and it was an emergency situation, I talked to Patrice about that one. They needed it, they were down to one fire truck. Samantha, one fire truck. And with winter coming on, that being, uh, with Burnham down there, that wasn't one worth, so we went ahead and pushed that one through with the budget amendment to follow. And they said that was protocol, you checked on that one?
I didn't.
Yeah.
It was okay.
Any more discussion? Roll call.
Craig Brooks.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
D.B. Eskenau.
Yes.
Mark Evans.
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey.
Yes.
John Pipinger.
Yes.
Samantha Trancom.
Yes.
James Switty.
Yes.
Okay, John Hoyt, employee handbook committee.
What do you say?
This is a...
Request.
Did you guys law an amendment?
Yeah. Still got the budget amendments, it's called 31.
Well, oh, okay, because that was under, okay, I thought that, I have a secretary, then fine for that, I'm sorry. Okay, yeah, budget, this is a budget amendment, request, Patrice, for the grant monies that are flowed through monies, um...
That was on our next street.
Okay. I don't know, $168,000 for 21st century coal for 2018, is that a, is that grant money or something, or what is that?
That's what it is, a 21st century grant.
Okay.
And I'm sure it's what it is.
And then, ATSI designation, $18,697. Good luck, I mean, whatever, knowing what it is, but what it says.
Says the grant wasn't awarded for what, it was in trespass, so they had to add some to it.
Yeah, evidently. Well, here's a little bit of, uh, "Federal projects has increased to such an amount that the fund cannot maintain itself, meaning funds must be spent before funds can be requested. The federal fund struggles each month to remain in positive with the trustee. Bills are beginning to be delinquent and payrolls are barely being made. It is certainly not because money is not readily available, it is because a large amount of money is being spent in expenditures. Again, funds must be spent before it can be requested. There is anywhere from 7 to 14. Day turnaround for funds to be deposited in the bank after requesting, most of the time is longer. Federal projects is requesting for transfer of funds. The money will remain in federal fund 142 as a buffer, it will be spent and replaced continually to allow the federal project to stay on a current spending schedule. At the end of the year, it will be accounted for. Federal projects is constantly monitored." I guess that was attached to clear up what everything was about.
Is that part of the money that they were into it about spending before it come in last year?
I don't know, I forget. I'm not my aunt, I forget.
Just post it.
I forget.
Is that a yes or no? She got to me, no.
Jeremy, you'll need to continue your sales.
I have to. I'm still waiting.
They, they have to do, uh, that's one of the ones I already reported on that one this year.
This is it?
Yeah. I talked to her a little bit about it, they do have trouble because the way that money comes in, they have to, well, like she said, they have to split it out before they get it back. And it's, just don't have the fund balance either right now to maintain what they're having to pay out before they get it.
Okay, any more discussion?
Now, that is two amendments that we're talking about.
This is two?
Well, it's, yeah, it's all, yeah, it's...
There should be two amendments from the school, from it, please.
Oh, yeah, this one is for $250,000. The what I read, that was what I read, okay. And then that was for the, yeah, and then it's, yeah, and then this is another one for[861.43][862.13]$1,674. That was, well, I did cite that, but that's $18,000. Oh, okay. And then that one, okay. Okay, yeah, it's just, it's just all broke down.
Are they looking at funds or not?
I think that's a really...
I don't understand.
When they make, especially to someone like me. Wouldn't it be requested they use the same format, formula that the county can use as a budget?
I have attached those numbers on.
Amendment three, amendment two. But then say this, uh, PLO just says amendment two.
They're not like... This is actually a good one.
Can I just continue this round, let me just move this through? From 141, is that, that's not accurate, which ones are those?
141, 7900, that's sort of the undesignated, isn't it?
Yeah, 141, 7900, before they...
And then what's this bottom, is that really what we're looking for?
Yeah. Should we? If they can take out the phone, they're undesignated. But 141, that don't sound right.
Your son was getting the funds before it's on it, and things have to be...
But maybe one that they can pay back, if they're just borrowing it in.
Oh, this is one-time transfer?
This is one-time transfer.
Yeah, they're out.
So it should be clear.
You're out.
But they still need to start using the same format we do on a budget amendments. For some of theirs, that they...
Name of the court?
Name of the court.
Oh, we need to acknowledge each amendment.
No, we don't pass it. They don't have a pair to actually pass them, they have a pair to vote on and send. That's number two and three. Number two. Number two. Number three? Number three? Make a motion to pass school budget amendments, number two and three.
Second motion.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Craig Brooks.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
D.B. Eskenau.
Pass the conference.
Mark Evans.
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey.
Yes.
John Pipinger.
Yes.
Samantha Trancom.
Yes.
James Switty.
Yes.
Seven yes, one passed.
Okay, now, employee handbook committee.
Employee handbook committee. The employee handbook committee makes the following recommendation for sanitation, and these were discussed with the county executive Hatcher. The recommendation is to hold the same holidays for the new sanitation workers and sites as we currently have under Sandec, which there's a list up here, I think Patrice still has a list of those days. And on the pay for sanitation workers, it's the recommendation of the committee that we bring the full-time over at level four, because that flattens their rate, that flattens their pay at what they're being paid now. And they have several years of service in with, with the company that they're at. And that part-time come in at $9 an hour, which is a cumulative to what they have now. And that any new full-time that are hired in, and this will be two, two full-time, correct? Patrice, it's two full-time, six?
There's two full-time positions.
Okay, the two full-time, if one leaves or we hire new full-time to take the place, that person will come in at level one, and any new part-time that comes in will come in at level, what equates to hourly at the level one rate. So you've got two recommendations there, one's to keep the same holidays for those employees and the sites, and the other is to move the current full-time to level four, part-time to $9 an hour, new full-times to level one, and new part-times to whatever equates to level one, which is how much an hour, Patrice?
Eight days.
Eight days. So that's the recommendations of the committee. Did I get all of that?
Thank you, David.
Kind of surprised.
Yep.
Make a motion to approve the recommendations.
Say. Any more discussion?
How much was the full-time employee gonna get on a level one?
Level one, if a new full-time employee come on, level one was...
Eighteen, three oh four.
Eighteen.
Annual.
Eighteen, three oh four? That's level one.
Well, how much does that amount, or that salary?
Eight days.
Four, I was going, yeah. It's seven something in mind. Bouncing around, I thought.
I did too early, but I got corrected on.
If that was true, then somebody would be getting killed.
Any more discussion? Roll call.
Craig Brooks.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
D.B. Eskenau.
Yes.
Mark Evans.
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey.
Yes.
John Pipinger.
Yes.
Samantha Trancom.
Yes.
James Switty.
Yes.
Eight yes.
All right, budget committee update. It's Robbie had this on, but he's not here, so... Patrice, you got any more things to shed light on?
Uh, no, just everybody turn to the next thing, I mean, we were all here for the one we just had, that's what that's for, right?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, nothing in particular he's gonna update us on, nothing, we don't know what he has.
Not that I'm aware of, what it is. Not sure.
I guess because he knew we were having the budget meeting, then...
Just give an update to, tell him he wasn't here, but...
Yeah.
There is one thing I want to throw in on that, I'll try to make this real quick. I've been working with Eric Brooks and Ms. Rogers on the Airbnbs and the collection. He's looking at it a little further, there's a, there's no real good way of collecting the lodging tax from the Airbnbs. It may end up costing us as much to collect it as it would to collect, and that's something we'll have to look at, he's trying to get a little more information, did he talk to you again?
I mean, he hasn't talked to me since, I think it was Wednesday, he and he were discussed, well, not Wednesday, Tuesday, he and he were discussing, he was gonna try to look in further and see how other counties are doing as far as them trying to get, get better collection as well. I did talk to the lady with Department of Revenue, and she had told me about the same thing I told him, that it would cost us more to probably to try to collect the amount that we would be getting from the Airbnb. And it's not just Airbnb, you've got...
HomeAway.
HomeAway, you've got VRVO, or Vacation by Own, by owners, or whatever. And it's just a small amount of what you would get. And if you start to look at, some of our customers that do have things listed under Airbnb, they're paying their taxes to us, so I don't know how you're gonna distinguish which companies that you're gonna buy from, or that you not buy from, but that you're gonna collect from that's not already paying us, so I don't know. She just said that us being a small county that we are and not having the big revenue coming in from the Airbnb, that it would probably cost us more to collect it. But she said that she's willing to do whatever she has to give the numbers or whatever, so I gave Eric her number to call her, to get in touch with her and discuss what, all the legal, the legal stuff about it.
Now, I did, I did check with Eric and asked his opinion, his opinion is that these entities are subject to the lodging tax that we passed, that they are subject to it, but it's gonna cost, you know, it may cost so much to do it, the problem is, if they're subject to our lodging tax and not paying, that puts all these other people who are paying rental cabins...
Paying hotel motel tax.
They're paying hotel motel tax, it's putting them at a disadvantage by us not going after the ones that are doing the Airbnb and HomeAway and everything.
Yeah.
Well, it's not fair, for one thing.
Yeah. I mean, it's putting them disadvantaged.
No, it's not.
Yeah.
What about, uh, Kelly doing a publicity blitz? Like, maybe an article about it, and, uh, the people will understand, you know, it is something that they should be paying, run that in the paper, and maybe a couple ads, you know, over a time period there, make sure everybody knows about it, you know, once it gets out there, the word will get around, and, uh, see if we can pick them up that way, that ain't, that would be the least cost of anything, is to get the information out there, if they're, you know, ignorant of the fact that they're supposed to be paying.
Now, I'm sure if somebody's renting out their room at their house, they don't know they're supposed to be paying hotel.
But the problem is, if they go through that, then, most of the time, they're the ones that's charging it and then not giving it.
Yeah, 'cause Airbnb will charge them a tax.
Yeah, I guarantee you, they charge.
Yes, the company itself, or the person itself is paying it, but it's not getting back to us.
Right.
Now, another thing too, can, if they're renting out their room, can you not hit them with a commercial appraisal?
Possibly, I mean, it's, uh...
That'd be one way to collect property.
It's gonna be a two-fold thing, 'cause, I mean, if you're renting out a room, you know, it's gonna follow, what I was talking to James about earlier, it's gonna follow under multifamily unit, so it could go commercial.
That'd be...
Also, the cost on these things, these companies are supposed to be audited every year, and they're not being audited.
Yeah.
And the company I talked to, I interviewed Jackie, the gentleman that does our audit, he does those in Superior County, and he says that you're looking at $250 for each audit, which means one of these places every year, so you're got, you know, you're upside down, your cost there.
Yeah.
And what you're gonna bring in, like this one guy's got a room he rents for $30 a night in his house, you're gonna gain $7 a year off him, but he's gonna cost $250, you know?
Yeah.
I mean, and they're requiring the statute to be audited, so, you know, when you push into this, you know, you're looking at all of these that gotta be audited, we'd have to find a firm or somebody like the one I'm using already to do these audits, 'cause we don't have the expertise to do these audits or the people to do it. But, you know, when you do go in the commercial aspect of it, you collect a few more dollars, but, you know, you're talking about a house with a room rented versus a whole house being rented.
Right.
And these cabins and rooms are not rented like they would in Nashville.
Right.
There's quite a bit of difference.
Well, I mean, I think that, Chattanooga, Hampton County was where the biggest cost was, I mean, it was like $900,000. Hope County was a minimal cost, you know, because you start pulling them counties down, like I said, VRVO, Airbnbs, all that, but, you know, this could wind up costing more than what it's really worth, but, you know, it's a fair and equitable issue, you know?
That's why I had, I thought that if we did a publicity, uh, college blitz or a program or whatever, you know, to just get the word out there, that these people need to know that they gotta pay it before it goes through their Airbnb or whoever, they still responsible to pay it.
But I discussed with you earlier about, I'm working up here mostly right now doing reviews and stuff, we have a lot of cabin companies out of the capable of Blue Ridge that rent homes over here, they're second home, people from Florida and Michigan and all of them, and they're renting those through that Georgia company, so you're gonna tackle that issue, you got an outstate company renting these things, how are we gonna collect through them?
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it's a big thing, so we looked over really good.
It's just kinda like it was when the internet taxing thing, you know, come about, they, you know, said, well, you know, we're losing all these estates, you know, all these millions in taxes, but they... They, you know, said, well, you know, we're losing all these states, you know, all these millions in taxes, but they, you know, few places now you do, are charged tax, but some of them you're still not. And so it, it's, it's very, evidently, it is very hard to enforce it, because now the states was even jumping up and down, not ranking that counties, you know.
I marked down a couple today, I seen, that I feel like their rental, their homes are being rented through these companies. But, you know, when I send their, their information, or Jackie sent this on their information, you might not get anything back, or they may send back something we're not renting, so who's gonna be the sheriff overall?
Yeah.
Permanent, you know. Well, Airbnb will do a, a contract, and have done contracts with Hamilton County, Knoxville, the big places, not, not any of the little counties. Right. But they will collect that tax as part of the paying process for the room. But Eric's, uh, recommendation was to get with McMinn, Monroe, and these other counties that are having the same problem, and try to make a coalition-type deal with Airbnb.
Yeah.
So that the cost is less. On top of that, uh, it's just gonna be about six to seven thousand a year, according to the records that Eric got.
Would Airbnb have to buy a business license in our county?
But he's looking at that now.
If they do, can we not just run their business license up, twenty-five hundred more dollars?
Eric did not know if they actually had to have a business license.
But if we can do that, you know, they collecting on their own, and you better believe they're collecting things.
Yeah.
And that'd cut out everything.
It'd be a lot like these, uh, like Amazon, and these other, they come through, sell merchandise from them.
Yeah, it's just, you're just, it's hard, I mean, it's, you know, it grabs you to every inch of the way, but it's just, I don't know, I mean, it's, I don't know. Okay, all right, moving on. Uh, resolution, the bridge over Oakley.
There's a copy of that being circulated out into the audience, and I make a motion to accept that resolution as presented.
Second motion.
Let's read it.
No. All right, any more discussion?
Really good.
All right, roll call.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Dewey Eskmones.
Yes.
Mark Evans.
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey.
Yes.
John Pipinger.
Yes.
Samantha Trenton.
Yes.
James Witty.
Yes.
Eight yes.
All right, number eight, self-evaluation and transition plan by the Polk County Road Department. And that'll be you, Mr. Roygene.
Just wanna thank you, time it all, all, all this is to put on record to y'all, to the commission, uh, tonight, our ADA evaluation and transit plan. And we've had enough with an amount, uh, for this plan, uh, nine thousand, five hundred and seventy-five dollars over the, over a period of four years. Probably be done sooner than that, but four years is our, our plan, and it's a good amount. It's not inclusive, we still have a few items here that we'll probably have to address later on, but right now, uh, we've got a pretty good, pretty good amount started to work into our budget, and I think we'll have to pretty well, every year, anticipate, uh, cost for the ADA plant. We're leaving out a fountain and a phone, I think we have to come up with a new phone system, a part of the ADA department.
A new phone system?
Yes.
Yeah, that's correct.
It's a ADA type phone, we're hearing impaired, so it's huge. It's making, it's part of their requirements. That TDY, TTY phone.
Yeah.
System, we got that installed in the phone. So that's, that's something I put that into, not for you, it's gonna, it might be happening soon, but it depends on, uh, planning and hope for that. This is just pretty much the record, and, uh, and I'm not for sure, uh, I don't know, if, does anybody know who the ADA officer is from the county?
Be, uh, I don't think Steve Longy had that responsibility, I'm not really so sure.
He's handling it.
He's one.
He's handling it up.
Yeah, it'd be, it'd be straight.
That's, this is our part to meet the requirement for the year, and this is for y'all.
Need a vote of acknowledgement on that, or is there any?
Just, uh, just that we presented it in time with the county, that way that covers, 'cause this is sensitive to state funding, at least plans and other things.
I'm making a motion that we acknowledge the reception of the, what was the actual title?
Self-evaluation and transition plan.
Self-evaluation and transition plan from the Road Department.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Dewey Eskmones.
Yes.
Mark Evans.
Yes.
Jeremy Kinsey.
Yes.
John Pipinger.
Yes.
Samantha Trenton.
Yes.
James Witty.
Yes.
Eight yes.
Okay, one quick thing, and I think we're ready to call it a night. Robbie wanted me to read this little sanitation update, so everybody, tell your neighbors, your friends, everybody you can tell. The buildings are constructed and are scheduled to be wired tomorrow, the Mennonites will finish them up by the twenty-third and twenty-fourth. Sand Tech will pull out one compactor from Benton on the twenty-third, twenty-third, followed by South Polk or Reliance on the twenty-fourth. All centers are closed on the twenty-fifth, on the twenty-sixth, they will pull Reliance, if not already, and Linsdale. Bakerways will be setting up equipment on the twenty-sixth at Benton, South Polk, et cetera. Advance will be pulling their equipment on the east side on the thirtieth. Grayson Creek closes at three, so they may shut down a little while early on that day. Bakerways is scheduled to be there the same day to set up. Nothing is changing outside of the county taking over. Estimated time to pull equipment is one and a half hours, set, time to set up is estimated at about one and a half hours as well. We are hoping for the least amount of interruption to the public as possible. If you have any big items to haul, you might want to get it done this week, weekend, just in case anything does arise. So, I think everybody's, you know, it's been trying to make clear, and we hope that it all goes well, so, uh, but, like, could be some slight delays. All right.
Oh, I just wanna say, uh, on the line, we got the Budget Committee making, what, seven, John Hoyt?
Yes, sir.
And the main, actually, the.
Six, six thirty.
Six thirty. As soon as it's over, uh, the Bill Committee needs maintenance for bad door outs, when they look at, uh, water drainage issues, and, uh, some, uh, handicap buttons, opening the doors for people in wheelchairs, they'll, they start getting surprises on them too.
Bill doesn't know that.
At some place, I can't think of what.
Let's see, these doors out here ain't got.
They're, they're not got all night open, dude.
Yeah, that's on Easter.
So, it's still. I just, they not got them either, when they look at them too, so, uh, that wasn't what I just jumped. I want everybody to have a. Yeah, we need to do that too.
And a happy new year.
Yes. And we will see everybody next year.